We'd like to welcome our guests to the Washita Parish School Board Meeting anytime is to be allowed, so y'all come anytime. Down to item number.
Row.
Willing to call Ms. Mekus?
Mr. Governor.
Here.
Ms. May.
Here.
Ms. Gray.
Here.
Ms. Van.
Here.
I stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance we done by.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just as.
Please pray with me.
Our gracious heavenly Father, just how awesome and loving and merciful God you are, heavenly Father, and we just praise and glorify you for your awesomeness and your kindness and your love and mercy, dear God. We're so thankful for the opportunity we have to serve on this board, heavenly Father, and we just ask for your guidance and direction today as we make decisions that impact our children and our employees in Washita Parish, and we ask for your wisdom and guidance on that decision that we make today and the decisions we make bring glory and praise to your name, dear God. We thank you so much for your plan of salvation, for Jesus carrying that plan to the cross, and just what a great Savior, cause we pray in his precious holy name. Amen.
Who has approval of minutes?
Motion, second.
Any discussion from the audience? On paper, yes?
Yes.
No? Motion carries. Moving down to approve of the agenda. Motion, second, approve the agenda?
I saw a move that we approved the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board.
Okay, on paper, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Moving down to personnel report. Motion, second, approve the personnel report? Won't have any? Okay. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the audience? Okay. Moving down to business. To consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution confirming election date change pursuant to an executive order of the governor confirming the date canv- to canvass the returns of this election. I need a motion and a second to approve that?
For that Regina, for that Regina present it.
Okay. Any discussion from the audience?
Regina, you need to kind of just go back over that with. I thought we don't. Yeah, we gotta go back over.
This item, as it says, is to consider and take action with respect to adopting a resolution to confirm the election date change pursuant to executive order of the governor and also confirming the date to canvass the result of the election. With the change in election dates, we were not, we did not have to change the date of our canvassing, so we weren't, we were not required to adopt a resolution, but just for the sake of clarity, we adopted a resolution confirming the date of the election change and confirming the date of our canvassing. So that's what this is, and we just need to ratify this vote.
Okay. We need a motion and a second?
I move that the board adopt a resolution confirming the election date change to November the thirteenth from December, excuse me, from November thirteenth to December eleventh, two thousand and eleven pursuant to the executive order of the governor, confirm the date to canvass the returns of the election at the December fourteenth board meeting and providing for other matters in connection therewith and to ratify the action of the board regarding this matter previously taken at the October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion, second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? Motion carries. On paper, yes?
Yes.
No? Motion carries. Moving down to item number two, Consequent Annual Financial Report for the year ended June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Ms. Mekus?
Ms. Williams was not able to be with us today. Last month, she went over the comprehensive annual financial report as well as the single audit report that has been issued and filed with the legislative auditor for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. So I won't go back through that presentation, but I can entertain questions if anyone has.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve this item?
I move that board approve the financial report for the year two thousand and twenty as presented by Ms. Mekus and to ratify the action of board regarding this matter previously taken on October nineteenth.
A second. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? On paper, yes?
Yes.
No? Motion carries. Item number four, Financial Report for August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. Ms. Mekus?
In the previous meeting in October, the financial statements for August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one were presented, and I just need to have that ratified.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the financial report?
I move to approve the twenty-one, twenty-two interim financial report ending in August thirty-first as presented by Ms. Mekus and to ratify the action that board has taken on October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? On paper, yes?
Yes.
No? Motion carries. Down to item number five, A Request to Address the Board for Suggested Funding Acceptance Policy. Mr. Aaron Hope?
Good afternoon, y'all. Thanks for giving me a few minutes to talk to you about this recommendation. And just to be clear, this is a recommendation of a policy. If you all determine that this is something that we would like to move forward with, I think we could have someone much smarter than me write the actual policy, but just to get a, an idea of the general, the general policy that I have in mind here. So I understand it takes considerable funding to operate a school district, and that funding comes from many different sources, and each source has different stipulations and requirements that have to be met in order to receive that funding. What I'm recommending today is specifically regarding funding that could jeopardize the medical freedom and privacy of school district employees and students. You all should have had a paper on your desk that says something about funding acceptance for Washita Parish School District. So this is an example. It says the Washita Parish School District will accept no funding or benefit from any agency or individual which comes with any stipulation, mandate, or requirement regarding the medical decisions made by staff members, employees, faculty, students, or the family members of staff members, employees, faculty, or students. Medical decisions include but are not limited to preventative measures including masks, shields, immunizations, and vaccinations. It is the intent of this policy to avoid situations where the school district must decide between respecting the medical decisions and privacy of school district employees and students versus enforcing stipulations necessary to receive any type of funding or benefit. So that's the, that's it in a nutshell. The overall theme is that all money isn't good money and that we should be very careful and deliberate when we evaluate the sources and stipulations tied to any money the school district accepts. Questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Hope. Do you have any, any comments from the, from the audience?
I'm Spencer Young in West Monroe. This all tied together, it might not sound like it. Searle tried for a couple of decades to get Aspartame approved. Donald Rumsfeld left Searle and joined Ronald Reagan's cabinet. There he helped appoint a new FDA head who promptly got Aspartame approved. Tony Fauci held a paid spot on the Gates Foundation's decade of the vaccine initiative just before we all knew what COVID was. Vaccines have helped fund his fortune. Surely that's not going to influence, you know, his message to us, right? In the early nineteen hundreds, the John D. Rockefeller Foundation donated hundreds of millions of dollars to colleges and medical schools, but the catch was they had to utilize the curricula that the Rockefeller and Carnegie Foundations had funded, which demonized any type of natural health care and pushed the use of the chemical industry's new pharmaceuticals, which Rockefeller and Carnegie had previously invested in. History is full of stories like this, and I bring it up because I don't think it's outlandish that it could happen right here in humble West Monroe, Louisiana. When Thomas Jefferson was asked if they were worried about bad people taking over the newly formed government, basically he said, "The people are gonna be bad," but you had to chain them with the, bind them with the chains of the Constitution. None of us in this room, given the right circumstances, are good, you know? History is full of folks like us out here getting fed up and trying to take your seat, right? And then winding it up just as decadent as the ones they tried to replace. And we've already seen you all chain the kids, the employees of the school system, and even the parents with the CDC protocol regarding masks, and that was tied to, from my understanding, the strings that were attached from the elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. That's the ESER money. So my main concern is that when the protocol is not a mask, but it's an injection, and this is coming, you don't see the writing on the wall, I just don't get it. The thing that bothers me is thinking that you will have obligated yourselves to try to force us to comply with some more crap that we don't agree with and that violates us. So that's why I'm asking you to support Mr. Hoyt's proposal. This is my last word, and I'm done. I mentioned the FDA, Aspartame, and Donald Rumsfeld. This monstrosity that we know as the COVID vaccine would literally be in the early stages of the first full human trial of any type of mRNA vaccine if the FDA had not approved it for emergency use last December. I'm going to repeat that. Last December, the FDA approved this as an emergency use product. It would still be in the first full human trial of any vaccine of its type, and that's what's coming in our near future. So let's take the money away from your decision making in the future, you know? Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jasmine Leonard. I'm here today to encourage the board to adopt this policy to protect medical freedom for the students, faculty, and family of faculty. It has been said, and I don't know all the facts, this is my first school board meeting I've ever been to, that the parish did take millions of dollars basically from the CDC or LDA, whatever, to enforce these mandates on our kids, and I just want to give y'all a little personal story about what has happened to my son wearing a mask eight hours a day, five days a week. He has had chronic nosebleeds since he's been wearing that. I have taken him to the doctor three different times. Two times he had bronchitis, and the humidity from the mask, we've tried four different kinds of masks. I also got a request to get an exemption, but I was informed by the principal, who's very, very nice, that he would have to wear the plastic face shield, and I would have to hot glue fabric underneath it, which would still keep the humidity in there, which would do nothing. The masks have left, but we know they're coming back. We know that they're putting out millions of doses right now for the children to be vaccinated, that our president has been on TV vowing that every child in the United States is going to be vaccinated. So we know that this, this crisis is not over just because the masks have been moved out by the governor for a few days or a few weeks, and it's going to be voted back in. And I'm asking you as a parent, as a taxpayer, to please try to have a special meeting and discuss like what options y'all could implement instead of that, and even with the COVID quarantine in right now. One of my friends, her son's been quarantined three times. He's in second grade, she's a single mom, she doesn't have family that lives in Louisiana, like parents she can call to take her kids while she's at work, and if she doesn't work, she doesn't get paid. There are people that are losing their homes, that are losing their cars because of these mandates where their kids are forced to stay home. My son has been tested three times since school started for COVID and all negative, all times, all negative, but I had to drop everything and go get him, and I mean, it's been a very, very hard road. This has been going on two years, and I guess I'm here to ask y'all today to please, you know, put your brains together, try to shake things up, I mean, see what y'all can do as, you know, our school board representatives to protect our kids better from these masks, like make exemptions more accessible, I mean, do something like to protect our kids from all these mandates. They're hurting the families here, they're hurting the communities here, people are suffering trying to, to stay home with their kids for weeks. And even yesterday, I was informed by my son that he was asked, he's, he's, he's a junior in high school, he was asked to continue wearing his mask through, you want to donate? Thank you. He was asked to continue wearing his mask or to get vaccinated in order to avoid a quarantine. He plays sports, and the coaches, the nurses are trying to prepare the kids, you know, to, to protect themselves from being quarantined through this time because they know it's coming, and I'm not getting my kids the vaccine. And I told my son, "Don't wear the mask, like you're free not to wear the mask, so don't wear it." But basically, if he doesn't choose to continue wearing the mask, he's going to be penalized and almost like discriminated against because of the mandates are discriminating against the unvaxxed people, even though my son has the blood antibodies. He has the antibodies, and we keep talking about science, why aren't my son's antibodies as good as the vaccine?
Yes, ma'am.
Like that's science.
You're three minutes up, ma'am.
She donated hers to me.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
Well, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't, we didn't.
Well, I'm asking y'all, I'm a taxpayer.
We can't do that, we can't take somebody else's time.
We voted y'all in to represent us.
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all don't represent Baton Rouge. Please have a special meeting and just think about things that y'all can do to protect our kids.
Yes, ma'am, I can recognize that lady to come and speak, but I can't give you her time, or your time, rather.
Okay, well, please have a meeting and please try.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Stand off.
I had no idea about this policy, like no idea, but I absolutely a hundred percent support this. First of all, I want to say thank you for moving the mask mandate. It looks great to look up here and just see you, see your faces, like this, this is huge. That was a huge positive move forward. See, misinformation seems a bird that's loosely thrown around today when something doesn't align up with what's being pressed upon us. It's being dismissed as misinformation, and in today's culture, we're being told what to think instead of being able to think for ourselves. So today, I'm gonna send each of you an email with an, and attached to it, you're gonna have links to everything that I present to you, because last time after I spoke, somebody come up and said there's a lot of misinformation, and I want to be clear that everything I'll bring to you is facts. Bill Wilson's on the Monroe City School Board, and he's done exactly that. He began researching what was taking place in and around the schools, and he took an unbiased approach to the information that were being fed as citizens of a free world, and he realized it just didn't add up. As soon as the Biden's administration's attorney general stated that he was going to send the FBI to the school board, school board meetings, Bill set things in motion to leave the National School Board Association. He stepped out of the narrative, and guess what? He got a ton of support. Last month, I spoke about forced vaccines, and the very next day, a van showed up in New Orleans and started vaccing kids. They used the parents' previous authorizations to allow it, and I just want to know, and I don't expect an answer, but I just want to know, what are we doing to stop that from happening in Washita Parish? I do expect some procedures to be put in place very soon, though. See, my mom, she was telling me about when she was a kid, she got lined up at school to get the smallpox vaccine. Now granted, that was a smallpox vaccine, and it did what it was supposed to do, but this that we have today is no vaccine. See, what if a van pulled up right now at West Monroe High School, a couple white coats got out, and they started telling the kids, "Line up and get vaxxed." How are we gonna stop it? And are we just gonna allow it to happen? It's happening all over the United States. It's not the school board's choice, it's not the teacher's choice, it's not the principal's choice, and it sure as heck's not the government's choice, it's the parents' choice. Again, bottom line, this isn't a vaccine. In the things I'm gonna send you, there's going to be a graph, and you'll see on that graph, since nineteen ninety, there's been less than a thousand people died from vaccines. In the last two years, over eighteen thousand that we know of have died. But on that same reporting site, it says that it's an estimated only one percent of vaccine injuries are reported, and that's been proven by Project Veritas, and I'm gonna send you a link to that, too. If you don't know who Project Veritas is, I suggest you watch their videos, don't listen to what the news is telling you about them, because they're the most honest and real journalists that are out there. Three hundred and forty-seven times journalists have had to go back and retract what they've written about them because they print the truth. Oh, God, I support this.
I had no idea what this was about. I have a question, first of all, before my three-minute start. If I question now, am I allowed to ask questions on another agenda matter that comes up?
You're allowed to comment on another agenda item, yes.
Okay. I have multiple sclerosis, lupus scleroderma, fibromyalgia. I have problems speaking when I get nervous. Please bear with me. I had no idea that was so hard to get a halt to somebody. I was on the phone with Peggy Slosson, seventeen minutes trying to figure out how to get an appointment with Mr. Don Coker. Took me the second day, somebody letting me know that email is the only way to get a halt to Mr. Coker. I'm not sure that's right.
Ma'am, do you need a chair?
No, sir. I do have, I think, a, a communication issue with this going on as well. Are our parents even gonna know that a van pulls up at the school to vaccinate our children? Because things have happened with the principals at the school, I have my children in there without me even knowing until afterwards, and then they call me on the phone to let me know this coincidence happened. That's my issue why I'm here today is we have a complete miscommunication between our principals and our parents, our, our staff at our schools and our parents. Because my children got kicked off the bus, all four of my children, instead of just one, and only one principal called me, not even the director of transportation. The one principal let me know that my, what had happened, that a state trooper would be getting a halt to me, and that's pretty much all he wanted to know, or all he would let me know. And then whenever I got a halt to, I appreciate that, I'd be too weak to open it. Whenever I got a halt to Mr. Skeeter Boyd, he pretty much laughed me off and told me he didn't have to talk to me anymore. I appreciate that. And I'm here because I have questions, because my children need after-school tutoring, and now they can't even get on a different bus for after-school tutoring. And then what about for their, he didn't even answer me about their after-school activities for their school trips to their, um, field trips, sorry, words evade me. It's very irritating. Didn't even [bleep] talk to me. Are we even going to have the communication to even know something is happening?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am.
Can y'all hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. So as you all know, my name is Roxy Johnston, and unlike the last meeting, I did come today prepared to speak in order to urge Scotty Wagner, Cherie Mae, Tommy Como, Jerry Hicks, Harold McCoy, Greg Manley, and Debo Graves to adopt the funding acceptance policy Aaron Hoyle just presented, so that Don Coker and the future superintendent of Washita Parish School Board will acknowledge, implement, and honor the adoption of this policy going forward. I have witnessed different hardships that our community has suffered and continue to suffer today due to policies that are being followed. It is very disturbing and heartbreaking what the employees, children, and parents have encountered by being treated as if they were policy guidelines and protocols, et cetera. We, the people, should treat everybody exactly what we are and which is people. Unfortunately, that is not how our world works today, and that is why every system we have is utterly broken. However, that is why I'm standing in front of you today to urge everyone to adopt a policy that will not hinder employment, education, and people's life and their quality of life. Let's repair the broken bridge that was built in order for our children to achieve and live in a bright future instead of a dark one that is hovering over them today. So I ask you this today is, will y'all do what's best for our children and protect their future, or will y'all continue to sell out their education and freedom for more funding? And before I go sit down, if any parents receive that, um, there, y'all cannot do a vote in order to vote out any kind of policies, I suggest y'all to read over all the handbooks that y'all are supposed to have to see what y'all can and cannot do, and then ask questions. Also with meeting laws, ask a question about meeting laws because y'all could accept a donation of another individual citizen to donate their time in order for the people can actually talk to y'all for y'all to represent them in a proper manner.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Veronica Danforth. I'm here to encourage the board to adopt this recommendation that Aaron Hoyle said, has read to you guys, to protect medical freedom for students, faculty, and family of faculty. By accepting this funding, you are infringing on our rights. Please adopt this recommendation. I pay taxes, I pay lots and lots of taxes for my child to go to school where I don't have to put him in a private school, for him to come home crying about masks every day. I don't want him to have some sort of jab put inside him that could possibly keep him from being able to walk, keeping his brain fogged up. I mean, I would prefer him to actually get COVID than to go through that, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, ma'am. My name's Lance Weatherby. I'm here to encourage this board to adopt this common sense policy. This policy will protect medical freedom for students, faculty, and family of faculty. By accepting this funding, you are infringing on our rights, so please adopt this policy. As it is not the school's district's place to incentivize, punish, medical decisions, the board can always vote to override policy in off-tone situations, but having a vote will require y'all to pause and consider what the money is being used for, and if it's something you want to get involved in. There is a difference in money earmarked in Band-Aids versus money earmarked for vaccines. There is no quota for how many Band-Aids you have to give out.
Hi, my name is Veronica Danforth. I'm here to encourage the board to adopt this recommendation that Erin Hoyle said, um, has read to you guys. Uh, to protect medical freedom for students, faculty, and family of faculty. By accepting this funding, you are infringing on our rights. Please adopt this recommendation. I pay taxes, I pay lots and lots of taxes for my child to go to school where I don't have to put him in a private school for him to come home crying about masks every day. I don't want him to have some sort of jab put inside him that could possibly keep him from being able to walk, keeping his brain fogged up. I mean, I would prefer him to actually get COVID than to go through that. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you ma'am. I may have gone a little bit.
Good afternoon, gentlemen, ma'am. My name's Lance Weatherby. I'm here to encourage this board to adopt this common sense policy. This policy will protect medical freedom for students, faculty, and family of faculty. By accepting this funding, you are infringing on our rights. So please adopt this policy. At as it is not the school's district's place to incentivize, punish, medical decisions. The board can always vote to override policy in off-tone situations. But having a vote will require y'all to pause and consider what the money is being used for. And if it's something you want to get involved in. There is a difference in money earmarked in Band-Aids versus money earmarked for vaccines. There is no quota for how many Band-Aids you have to give out. Now, this is not a several bullet or a fix-all for everything, alright? It's a brick in the wall to ensure the school system does not have to enforce something that the people of Washita Parish do not agree with. We have control. We control, we have control what we can control. Staff and students shouldn't be viewed as dollar signs, especially when it comes to their medical decisions. There comes a time when you have an obligation to stand up for freedom and not let monetary gain influence the health of our children. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Paul Jackson. I'm a little one being up here, but my name is Melissa McKinney. Um, I am. Can you hear me now? Um, I'm an RN. I work at a hospital around here. I work in the cath lab, ER, and ICU. Um, COVID has been my primary. I do want to say up here that, um, a lot of people haven't been on the front lines since the very beginning, but I have and I know the struggle y'all have had with different policies pulling them back and forth with masks and everything. I'm only here to say, um, that Ms. May, you were my principal at one time. At West Monroe, we were big on football, we were big on all of our, you know, our sports. What you have to take into consideration is I am seeing a lot of injuries from vaccines. I want you to hear what I'm saying. This is not minor injuries. This will put a dent in every person's sports there, regardless of sports, their everyday living. Um, this policy needs to be accepted because money is coming your way, but what is it for? Um, I heard that someone was bribed and tried to say that, you know, just get the vaccine and you won't have to wear a mask. That is false. I am vaccinated. I have to wear a mask every day I'm at work. That does not change. After we were vaccinated in the cath lab, half of our members were out from COVID. You know, this is, the testing of the unvaccinated is very, very, it's not a good policy to even bring in because they are still getting COVID and they can still spread it. So just take that into consideration too. This is not a vaccine that was grown, built in an egg. This is a totally new technology, guys. We need to be aware of that because it is causing problems. Um, I'm just worried about the kids, that's all.
Thank you ma'am.
Afternoon y'all. Um, I come today in support of the funding acceptance recommendation presented to the board by Mr. Hoyle. Um, this recommendation with addition of, um, adding in no incentivizing promoting advertising or curriculum inclusion for medical interventions and preventative measures shall be used as means to infringe on the family unit. Also to include, um, no reprimands or consequences shall be enforced upon students and employees for their personal medical decisions granted to them. By adopting this recommendation, or at least the consideration of this recommendation and these additions, you will begin to regain trust with your students, your employees, the parents, and taxpayers, uh, and the citizens of Washita Parish. The recommendation presented to the board today will protect the board of the liabilities you all have taken on by your current policies and enforcements. You've become liable for revised statute seventeen one seventy, section E, that not only exempts students from any and all vaccinations to attend, to attend school, but also that written dissent is all that is required. State law also states that students can provide proof of immunity. So the quarantine policies and procedures you all have allowed breaks this law. Masking and additional testing requirements of individuals violates RS seventeen one seventy, section E. Revised statute forty eleven fifty-nine point seven also states that nothing contained herein shall construe to abridge any right of a person eighteen years of age or over to refuse to consent to medical or surgical treatment as his own person. The Louisiana Constitution, Article One, Section Five, states that every person shall be secure in his person, property, communication, housing, papers in effect for unreasonable searches, seizures, and invasions of privacy. Revised statute twenty-nine seventy-three oh six D, even while under a declared public health emergency, nothing in the chapter on emergency powers shall be interpreted to diminish the rights guaranteed to all persons under the Declaration of Rights of the Louisiana Constitution or the Bill of Rights under the US Constitution. This chapter shall not violate Article Two, which is distribution of powers, meaning that the governor cannot make law, these mandates are not law. Coercion and punishment for our current state's unrest is unethical and has no standing in the mending of these damages, mistrust, poor stewardship, and disrespect for our students, families, employees, and community. You can begin earning our trust by accepting these flyers that were provided to you today. Um, they look like this. Um, to inform parents and students of their rights and what they are actually consenting to. I ask that the board make motion to consider this, uh, recommendation by Mr. Hoyle and also to request that these flyers be given out to all students in our district and to their parents. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank y'all for speaking, thank you. Moving down to item number six. Consideration of Approval of Policies, Ms. Jennifer Nugent.
Okay, if you'll look in your policy binder again. Uh, at number two. You will see the eight policies that you received last month for consideration. And I'm asking for your approval of those eight policies today.
We have a motion and a second to approve these policies that she had last week. A motion and a second. Any discussion from the audience?
Hi again. Um, I recommend that the board postpone these policy adoptions to give the public more time to review and get our concerns and questions clarified. Um, and the school board meeting policy last revised in August of twenty eighteen states that regular meetings of the school board shall be held on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, alternating the time between twelve noon and six PM, except when the meeting date falls on a legal holiday. So unless there's something emergent or crucial that is necessary to vote on these policies today, I hope and I do request that the board postpone these policies and schedule another board meeting for Tuesday, November thirtieth at six PM per the school board policy so that the public can have more time to review these. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Connie Sampanero. I would also like to have the opportunity to review these policies. And if you would please, at the next meeting, either it be in two weeks or next month, let us vote at that time and give us a chance to review these and if we have any questions regarding these that we have opportunity to ask. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any more discussion from the audience? From the board? All in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. We will now down to number seven. Esser Funding Update, Clint Miller and Dr. Coker.
Good afternoon, board and Dr. Coker. Um, as y'all know, over the last year or so, in several board meetings and several of our finance committee meetings, we've talked about the Esser Funding. And so Dr. Coker just asked me to kind of give an update on where things were right now. Uh, so first I do want to back up just a, just a little bit, just to make sure we all, we all understand what we're talking about. Um, the Esser is, uh, stands for Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. And that is actually a group of, of acts, uh, that, that have been passed by Congress and signed by presidents to, uh, address the impact of COVID, uh, on elementary and secondary schools. Um, the Esser Funding at this point is made up of three different acts. Um, the first, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security, or CARES Act, which was signed by President Trump in March of twenty twenty. Then there's the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental, which is the CRSA Act, which was signed by President Trump in December of twenty twenty. And then finally, the American Rescue Plan, or ARP, which was signed by President Biden in March of twenty twenty-one. And just to go over some of the allowable uses for these funds. Um, the, the primary uses were to respond to the social, emotional, mental health, and academic needs of students that have resulted from the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, or more concisely, how you're gonna prevent, respond to, or recover from the effects of COVID-nineteen. Um, to help us reopen schools safely, to, uh, help provide for the physical health and safety of students and staff, to provide for the social and emotional health and safety of students and staff, to provide accelerated learning opportunities for our students, to provide summer learning and enrichment opportunities for our students, to address lost instruction time caused by COVID-nineteen. Uh, we also can use these funds for school facility repairs and improvements to reduce the transmission of viruses and other environmental health hazards. We can use it to support and maintain a high-quality staff. And finally, it can be used for educational technologies to support in-person hybrid and virtual learning. Now, there's probably some things that it can be used for outside of that, but that's a, that's pretty much the, the meat of what these funds, uh, can be used for. Um, just to kind of get into the grants and how they work, these are reimbursement grants. So we're allocated money by the, by the federal government through the state. And then as we, we submit budgets, budgets get approved, we expend dollars. Once we expend dollars, we do quarterly reimbursement requests through the state and the money transfers back to us. Uh, so there's a lot of checks and balances in, in the accounting side of things. Um, the Esser one, that's roughly six point eight million dollars. Esser two represents roughly twenty million dollars. Esser three roughly forty-five million dollars for a total of just under seventy-two point five million. Um, so that's, that's kind of the, the, how the grant process works at a, at a pretty high level. Um, the one thing that I want to point out is that these, I, Dr. Coker, myself, we both refer to these as living grants. These are not one-time, spend it right now. It, these are, these, these have a, a couple of year period. So the Esser one actually goes through September of twenty twenty-two. Esser two goes through September of twenty twenty-four, and Esser three through September of twenty twenty-four. Um, so we basically, we worked with our, with our committees internally that we put together to, uh, put our budgets together and kind of the plans we move forward is that we would reevaluate our spending and our budgets every, every six to twelve months and make changes as needed to help us, you know, make sure that we're moving money around if it's not getting spent in certain areas and, and find somewhere else that we can use that. Um, finally, before I get into, to the, the, a, a little more specifics about the grant. Um, as part of this, you know, we've done several things to date. Um, we're kind of at a point where we do want some additional feedback, so we will, we'll be doing a parent-community survey. It'll probably be a Google form. Um, I'm still working on that, but I hope to maybe have that released by the end of this week. Um, maybe into next week, so that, that'll be coming just to kind of get, uh, you know, parenting community input on where things are right now. Um, as well, I think Dr. Coker may have mentioned this at the last meeting, and I'm a little behind, but I, I'm working on getting some Esser information up on the website and hopefully that'll be there by end of this week, uh, sometime, or sometime next week. Um, so I know if, uh, for those in the audience and board members, you've got a copy of this chart in your, in your packet. But, um, this is just kind of a, a high-level, uh, look at, at our spending. So I'm gonna, I'm not gonna get too, too in-depth on this, but, uh, what I do want to point out is, I'll, I'll kind of go through it from left to right, but what I want to point out is this represents four years of budgeting. Um, the blue is going to be, so each column is a particular focus area that we are planning to spend funds on. The blue is going to be twenty-one, twenty-two budgets. The red is your twenty-two, twenty-three budgets. Yellow, your twenty-three, twenty-four budgets, and the green, your twenty-four, twenty-five budgets. The green is a very small portion of this because the fact that the, the last grant ends in, in September of twenty-four, there's just some very limited things that we'll do in, in that funding year. Mostly will be around the summer programs that we would be offering. Um, so just to kind of, I'm gonna go left to right on, on the, the, one of the smallest ones there is early childhood education. Um, I think that's about a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars being spent. Um, the second column, you get into elementary school. That is some specific stuff for elementary schools that doesn't really, uh, doesn't really bleed over into middle school. Mostly that's tutoring in school and after-school tutoring. Uh, so you're looking at, at roughly, uh, roughly one point seven million dollars a year on, on that. Uh, your middle school, that's gonna be tutoring as well as we're gonna be doing some middle school credit recovery. And so that's just under a million dollars a year for, for that. The high school, that gets into ACT, ACT vouchers, ACT, uh, trainings and tutorings. Uh, some of our Edgenuity and Bridge Academy, um, that sort of thing, as well as tutoring and credit recovery. Um, part of what we're trying to do with that is, in the past, families have had to pay for the teachers in the summer for credit recovery and through this, that, they will not have to pay that. They won't have to pay for some of these ACT tests, so, uh, that's, uh, hopefully will be a benefit there. The next bar is curriculum. That's the tallest one on, on the chart. And, uh, if y'all don't know, curriculum is expensive. Um, the red you see is a big chunk. We're actually gonna be, uh, and, and this is outside of my area, but the, they'll be adopting some new curriculum for, I think, early elementary reading, uh, next year. So that's kind of where that big chunk comes in. Um, the rest of it is, uh, different curriculum materials, resources, subscriptions that we have to have for, for our various curriculums. Some of it that is online stuff. Um, but that's, you know, as you can see, that's the big chunk of where that money's going. The sec, the next one is hybrid and remote learning. Uh, a lot, that's mostly some of our, uh, online software that we use for helping with Chromebooks, for, uh, NearPod and some other tools that the teachers and students use in classes. You can see that the big chunk of that is spent or budgeted for this year. And that's, that's to represent the Promethean panels that we're in the process of putting in to replace all of the old, um, largely broken and non-functional, uh, projector-based smart boards that we had in the classrooms. Then we get into, uh, social and emotional learning. Uh, you can see the, the expenses there are, uh, pretty even across the years. Um, a lot of that is, we've got some PDs, we've got some, uh, mental health professionals that we're paying for, um, trying to put people in the schools for the students and teachers. The next item, which is the second largest bar on the, on the chart, is SOAR. That's our summer program that y'all all know we, we had this year. The plan, uh, it was very successful. Uh, we felt like, uh, teachers, uh, enjoyed it. The students enjoyed it. The, the parents seemed to be happy with the results. So at this point, you know, we're kind of planning to continue that for the next four years. And we figure the spending will, will go up just slightly each year. The next segment is teacher recruitment. Uh, we're spending some of that on, uh, our alt cert teachers. We're spending some of that on our alt cert teachers, when we get our resident teachers to help them get a check earlier in their first school year, tuition assistance, teacher leader PLCs, that sort of thing. The next bar is COVID leave. As y'all know, y'all passed a COVID leave policy a few months ago to help continue COVID leave for employees after the federal help on that ran out. So this will be to help cover the cost of the employees and the subs required for the COVID leave. The next bar, big blue bar, I'm gonna let Dr. Coker cover that one.
Thank you, Clint. First of all, I want to say a big thanks to Clint and the hundreds of people that have actually been involved in trying to put this plan together. And it is a living document. It is one that can be rebudgeted. If we don't use everything in our summer program, then we can rebudget it for other items that are out there, as long as we're following and staying in the guidelines of what have been handed down for us. I am happy to say, and I didn't even announce this at my principal's meeting last week, but I told him, I said, you know, you two been with us so that you can see and that our board will be the first to also know this, is that we have included a pandemic pay for our employees in the Washington Parish school system. I know how hard it's been on every single employee that we have had in this district. You can go into the schools and you can see them. You can see our bus drivers and see the stress that they have, and the stress that our teachers have been under, and our administrators, and all the way from clerical staff to paraprofessionals to custodial to cafeteria. And so we have budgeted in, and this is coming in the ESER 3 monies, is what it's coming in, a one-time, and it'll be a one-time because that's what we were looking at. And I'll be honest with you, initially, we're looking at trying to get indirect cost. There are some indirect costs that comes to the general fund from monies that we are reimbursed with. Well, if we waited on indirect cost, we wouldn't be able to directly affect and help our employees as quickly as what we're able to do with this. So we have done the budget item of $1,500 one-time pay for all full-time employees that have been hired by the board. And this $1,500 is set to go out on March the 24th, which is a week, well, actually two days prior to spring break. And so we're happy to be able to include this pandemic pay in for our employees. It will not be divided according to certified and support. If you are a bus driver that works three or four hours a day, you're gonna get the same amount that the teachers that work seven and eight hours a day or any other employee. So, you know, as the committee talked and we looked at this, when you talk about pandemic pay, you don't talk about putting a value on someone's life and the job that they are doing. And so we felt like, across the board, everyone would be receiving the same exact pay for this. So I'm really happy that we were able to use part of this money. I think this is gonna be a little over a $5 million out of the 72, 73 million that we have, that we're gonna be able to, I don't wanna say reward, because they have been working. They have been working hard, and they have been doing what we have asked them to do, and we're so appreciative of that. So that is, that's one of our big items for this particular school year to be able to do.
Thank you, Dr. Coker. As we move towards the end, the bar right after the solid blue bar is another pretty good-sized one. That's for specifically indoor air quality. That's kind of one of the big pushes with this money, is to use it to improve the indoor air quality of our schools. So some of that is going to replacing systems that are in need of, or in bad shape. Some of that is going to networking the system so that Stevens guys can have better control over the systems remotely, so that they can help to monitor, to control, you know, temperature and humidity, and keep things better situated, a better environment for our faculty and students. Replacing carpet, steam cleaning carpet, or air filtration, that sort of thing. And you can see, we're trying to spend as much of that as we can upfront right now so that we can get the maximum impact as quickly as we can on the improvement of air quality. As we move into the next one, that's school safety. The vast majority of that is cleaning and sanitation supplies that are used in the schools. Trying to keep desks clean and any surfaces that are used, keeping them as clean as possible. Also includes at some of our schools to provide some outdoor seating areas, benches, tables, that sort of thing, to help, one, promote students congregating outside, you know, where it's fresh air. Then we've also got a fair amount for the touchless water bottle filters to kind of try to get those in all the schools. The next one is technology infrastructure. That's mostly just some things to help us accommodate the increased load that we've had in moving to a one-to-one environment with our students in these Chromebooks. One thing you don't see in here, we did have in the original CARES Act, and let me do, I do want to say that, this money right here, what you're seeing is just for the ESER 2 and 3. We, you know, we're towards the end of the original, the ESER 1 grant. We've still got some to spend there, but what you're looking at is the proposed budget for the ESER 2 and ESER 3 monies. But we were able to use the ECF fund, which is a completely separate deal to order all of our Chromebooks that we needed to be one-to-one. So we were able to do that outside of the ESER funding, which was good. That was, I think, $6 or $7 million, something like that. The last one is other, you know, you always end up with an other category for some things that just don't fit in the right places. Some of that is fuel costs for buses, for all of our tutoring programs, for the summer school program. That's all lumped into one, so it was hard to kind of stick it in another group. Some for some of our ESL students, some box trucks to help us maintain better, being able to get stuff delivered quickly. This has been, the last two years has been a huge impact on our warehouse and that crew because of how much supplies they have to keep on hand at any given time with the supply chain issues that we have today. A lot of times, they've got to buy bigger quantities in advance, so the box trucks will just kind of give some extra capacity to move things around. So that's kind of the thousand-foot overview. You know, we didn't get into the specifics of all of the projects right now, but if you, Todd, if you'll go to the next slide, this is just kind of a status, and I know it's a little hard to read, and my intention is to get some of this information on the website, like I said, in the next week or so. This is just kind of where we stand today with all of our grants. You can see the first, the first column is the different funds. Even in our ESER 1 and our ESER 3, they kind of broke that up into some smaller funds, but you can see our allocations for that. We spent right at $5.7 million expended in the 2021 school year. To date, in the 21, 22, we've expended $1.9. The vast majority of that was our summer programs, the SOAR, as well as some of the credit recovery stuff that we did at the high schools. So we're still, at this point, we're only spending what we feel like we're gonna do whether the funding was approved or not, because we didn't want to step out there with things that we were gonna have to turn around and eat later. So at this point, we've expended just over $7.6 million. We've encumbered another $2.7 million, so, you know, we're just over $10 million that's either been expended or encumbered. To date, we have requested and been reimbursed roughly $5.7 million, and that's ESER 1 all the way through ESER 3. I think the way the reimbursement cycle runs, we'll have another reimbursements coming here shortly, but that's kind of where we are right now with this. I don't think there's a whole lot more I can say. That's where we stand right now. We're just gonna kind of keep moving forward with what we've talked about. Like I said, we will be reaching out to the community and parents to get their input on what our proposed budget items are, but that's my report.
Yeah, a few things that we've learned even from our summer program is, the SOAR program was designed to be something that was very relaxed, trying to get our kids back into school, liking school, doing fun things with them. There were no testing, there was no accountability or anything like that for them, but we wanted them there, just so that we could give them an additional 21 days of learning experiences. And in doing that, we found out that that was very successful at the elementary level. It was a great idea at the middle school level, but we found out that middle school kids would much rather be able to earn that failed class back that they didn't, that they did not get. And so for this next school year, we're actually gonna have part of our summer program for students who had failed, where they can come in and they can actually re-get those, or reclaim those credits that they failed and pass to the next grade. So we're excited to be able to bring that back to our middle school kids for next year. We have that in the high school. We have credit recovery. We've spent quite a bit of money, you know, with our credit recovery. And lost learning, students' lost learning was a big part of this entire plan. That and the curriculum that went with that. And we know that, you know, this is kind of a one-time thing, that this is not, so we try to do a lot of one-time expenses, you know, multiple years, that is not gonna be sustainable, because you're not gonna have money like this, you know, this is my 42nd year. I've never seen anything like this. And sometimes, and I would agree with the comment that made, some money, good, money's not always a good thing. Money doesn't solve everything. I understand that. I get that, you know? But in this case, we have spent a lot of this money, much of this money, on our kids trying to make up for what they have lost. On our employees trying to overcome, you know, what they have been doing, because a lot of this goes into tutoring, and it's our teachers and our paras that we are able to pay for doing those extra services that are out there. And so, again, I can't tell y'all what a mega job this has been. I know that we have two that have been right there, and actually, Mr. Keegan, our director of Title I, and Clint have been the co-chairs of this. And the worker bees have been Ms. Monroe and Mr. Peters that are right back there in the back, that has entered every bit of this into EGMS and some of the places that we submitted to the state. And then you wait, it's a waiting game. You wait and see where the state sends it back to you and says, yes, we approve, no, we don't approve. And if it's no, we don't approve, then, and if it's no, we don't approve from the state with no comments, you can just about ax it off your list because they're probably not gonna fund it. If they put some comments on it, then we can pretty much use some of the comments and tweak it to be able to get it funded. So it has been a back-and-forth, you know, on where we are and what we're doing with this money right now. And I will tell you, this money was issued out to students based on your free, reduced status in this parish. Okay, when I say that, we get $72 million. My city schools also got around $72 million with a third the number of students, but more students that would qualify for the funding. And so, you know, one based on one-to-one student that you have in your district. So I think that we are in the process of putting together a really good plan that is going to meet the needs of our kids, and meet the needs of our employees, and meet the needs of our community right now. And it is a, it's a work in action, I can tell you. There will be budget revisions, and there will be things that maybe we're not gonna stay within the entire budget, but we can then add to something else. Okay? Clint, do you have anything else?
That's it.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a motion in a second. Yes, one minute, please. We have a motion in a second to approve the ESER funding update.
Do you have a motion? Any motion?
I saw a motion. We need a motion.
Yeah.
I saw a motion.
Second, okay. Any discussion from the audience?
Yep. You got a voice.
Dr. Coker, I would like to make one clarification before we get some comments from the audience. It's my understanding that these ESER funds have no connection and no way tie-ins to the mask mandate from the government. Is that correct?
Is, where Clint go?
The ESER funds from the Congress passed, they're sent down to us in these three different installments that we received. My understanding's always been that they have no tie-in or mandatory requirement that we follow the governor's mandate on mask mandates. Is that correct?
So I'm gonna give you my, I'm not an attorney, answer. My understanding, from what I've looked at and researched, there's definitely nothing in CARES or CRSA. There is some clause that talks about, in the art, that we have to indicate in our reopening plan, how we would use funds to implement prevention and mitigation strategies to the extent practicable, consistent with CDC guidelines. But we really haven't used the funds for any of that except for the sanitation stuff, your air quality. That's really the only thing that we've expended or budgeted these funds for in that vein.
I was gonna say, in all my discussions and meetings that I've been in, that has never been a requirement or been discussed that
We've not bought masks with these money.
...in any way, form, or fashion to a governor mandate on masks.
Right.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
From my studies, that is incorrect. The CDC mandates or directives must be followed to keep that ESER money. That's from my study. This thing where they give you money, you know, to do whatever, you know, protect the place from COVID, whatever, that's literally no different than that example that I gave of the Rockefeller Foundation and the Carnegie Foundation influencing the medical schools and the universities, knowing that that was gonna sell their products. Eventually, there was not a holistic medical school in the nation, and that didn't take long. It's like a decade. It went from hundreds of schools that taught natural healing, you know, not chemical healing. It went to zero in about a decade due to their work with those foundation monies. There's a Bible verse that says, "Better is a dry morsel with quiet than a house full of feasting with strife." I would rather y'all be broke and poor, and these kids and everybody be intact genetically, than for this area to have all this money and be able to build your schools and your HVAC systems and all that. And I imagine most of the people in this room feel the same way. I'm gonna expose in the next 30 minutes a fraud. It's this mask mandate. I'm gonna take that one point. I've said this 100 times. Literally, if you can like craft a mask out of an old pair of lace panties and walk into any place that's requiring a mask, that's fraud. If there was anything to the mask mandates, there would be some specks on what was actually gonna work to keep a virus in or out. Literally, I've done it. I walked in with a holy mask that was made out of a screen door, when, screen, when this first started. Usher you right on in. That's ridiculous. You know, so when we're doing things, why don't we like You know, so when we're doing things, why don't we like, look at, is this really what this is about? This mask thing? In my opinion, the mask is a placeholder for the vaccines. That's going to be the issue that we're all going to be up against in the very near future. Y'all got to stand right now. How are we going to fight it when that comes? That's where it's going 100%. There is no denying that. I don't care who you are. Okay, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
I pulled up a presentation from the Louisiana Department of Education. It talks about S R funds, what it can be used for. It said COVID-19 vaccinations, updated guidance from S R funding. S R funds may be used to provide COVID-19 vaccinations to staff and eligible students. allowable vaccination outreach could include activities to create awareness and build confidence, facilitate clinics and provide incentives such as paid time off for staff to get vaccinated. So I was confused earlier. I assumed that you guys gave me a big metal finger, but I'm just, it seems to me that you're going to be getting this, this S R money until 2024. So now your hands are tied in a sense. And you're in too deep. So there's no way that you can say you will not accept money that's tied to people's medical freedom or medical decisions or medical privacy. Is that, I mean, I just want to be clear. All right. Thanks, y'all.
I'm with him about the, the mask. And, and from what I've read from doctors, psychiatrists, they're not only hurting people physically, but mentally. And I know it said in this, a lot of social and mental work or whatever. And, and I think they already know that, yes, doing all this to our children is going to cause that. I know it has to my granddaughter, who says even when they remove the mask mandate, she'll keep hers on. I mean, that's how mentally psychic she's gone now with this and scared, would be scared to take it off. I, I would just like to ask if you, as the school board, would make a commitment to put a mask on for eight hours a day or every day that our children wear them? Would you make that commitment?
Hi. Okay, Mr. Plant Miller, is that right? Okay, I wanted to refer back to the register of what Mr. Mangley was just asking about the mask situation with the S R funds. Right here is the register in order to adapt those policies and follow their guidelines. It simply states right here that to follow the CDC guidelines, that is also including universal correct wearing of masks, modifying facilities to allow for physical distancing such as cohorts, hand washing, respiratory cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, including improving ventilation, contact tracing in combination with isolation and quarantine. So in order to receive the S R fund for the pandemic relief, here is the requirements for the school districts and any other businesses to follow. I'd be more than happy to email you this and actually highlight it, any of you, if y'all are interested. And I also wanted to point out, just like you said a few minutes ago, you've been in the school system for 42 years, is that what you said? And you've never seen this much money. So y'all can operate without it.
Good afternoon. Nikki Crutzer, just a concerned taxpayer, citizen, and want to see our school board, your school board, Monroe City, spend our dollars in the right way. And what is our mission as a school board, Mr. Hicks? To educate children, to prepare our students to be possibly successful adults out in our community. And right, you've got $72 million coming in. You already have a rather large budget, don't you? So my advice to these parents and people sitting back here would be, hold this board accountable. Look at the money they have already. Look at the 72 million. And then let's say from this day forward, how many students graduated? Did we improve? Did our ACT scores? That's what you look at, is the data. I want to compliment Mr. Miller, I haven't met him, but that was a wonderful presentation. I do hope you put it on your website because I would love to have a copy of it. To know exactly how much money you're spending in all of those areas, how much you have spent, and is it going to directly impact the students' education? That's, got a question. May I ask one, Mr. Hicks? Of Mr. Plant or you or Dr. Kofer? Uh, Kofer. To whom do you submit your plans to the state? When you have a, want, want to spend your money? I know it's the State Department of Education, but a person?
There's an, there's an online grant system. And it's the same, same thing that we use for all of our federal funding.
So it'll be the E G M F.
E G M F.
Okay. But this doesn't show up on the website. You can go to the dashboard for COVID, you know, E S S R, but you don't see it. Okay?
Mr. Keegan, I know he, he does a lot of.
Hello.
And there are a number of reasons to read that. They will give a comment or they will reject those items that we have. If they reject, we have to come out and completely change those. If they give a comment, we have to change the comments about whether they're accepted. Only that forward, our entire Board of Governors should do that. If it's not there, because that is something that we don't put there or something that the state.
The state hasn't put there.
If it's not there, the state hasn't put it there. But you can go there and read every line item that we have.
Okay, thank you. That, that is not on the state website. But will it be available? Are your parishioners, if they want to see the plans that you submit to the state, will that be pub, for public review? So all we have to do is email Dr. Kofer?
Mr. Biller?
By email, or can we call and get you?
I do take phone calls.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vic.
With those different bulletins, which I think you hit on a bunch of stuff, if we are going to take the money and, you know, it's there. I think you have good information, but if I could ask, maybe add a column with some money? If we are going to be vaccinating the kids, education to our staff, how and what needs to be available if vaccinations are given to the children? As far as with blood clots, strokes, seizures, if they have that available on these schools premises? Definitely education on what to see, especially during practices. If one falls out, they don't need to just say it's a heat stroke. They need to ask for certain things. Are they having chest pain? Are they having cert, you know, leg pain? It could be blood clots. Just somewhere that could be added with the money.
And, and I will share with you, at our last principals' meeting, I had all of our principals there and we have an agenda and we send it out to, you know, and, and our job for our principals is to take it back and get with their leadership team and with their teachers to make sure that they know what's going on communication-wise from the district office. And one of the topics about number four or five, I can't remember which one of them, in bold print, I put, Washitaught Parish School System will not be conducting vaccinations with the kids in the Washitaught Parish schools. The only exception, and here's the exception, we have two school health-based centers. One is at Ryser Middle and Ryser Elementary. One is at West Monroe High School. I have contacted Katie Parnell, who is over the communal health systems that runs both of our school health-based centers. And we were all in agreement on this. Your people will not vaccinate our kids. I don't care if they're 18 years old, 19 years old or 20 years old, unless their parents are in the health unit with them. That is the only way until they, they being, who knows? Because, guys, I'm not sure that you're not right on this vaccination thing. I'm just not sure about it. I don't know. I see the way that this country is going and, and I'll be honest with you. I have gotten my vaccinations. That was my choice. That was my choice. But I do not believe that we should be infringing our choices on our employees in order for them to keep their jobs. I will just tell you that. That's, that is where I stand. Now, this is my opinion. This is not the board's opinion. But I will tell you that we, our principals know that y'all, when I say erroneous information, it had gotten out there because I had three schools that couldn't have school one day for saying that there were buses in the parking lot vaccinating our kids. And the phone calls started coming in left and right. And we, it was so much disruption on those campuses because we have never allowed that. Did we have a chance to have vaccinations through S R funds? Yes. Did we decline it? Yes. Did we have a chance to have, to pay kids to be tested every week in Washitaught Parish? Yes. Did we decline it? Yes. So we feel like we are looking out for the best interest of our kids and our employees as we are navigating through these waters that we've never navigated before. Now, are other districts around us doing some of these things? They are. And that's their decision for their board to be able to make. But we have not brought those kind of things to this board at this time. And I hope that I never have to bring things like that to this board. So that's kind of where we are district-wise, just to let you know that we've got the communication out there to our principals to let them know that, you know, we're not vaccinating kids on campus. We're not opening that door at this point. I hope we don't have to open that door. But I don't want to promise anything that I can't 100% for sure, you know? But if we do, it's going to be with a parent right there with that child. I can just tell you that. It's not, it's not going to be just a phone call over the phone or a note sent home. That parent's going to have to bring them there and have to have it done. There, you have your parents' choice to do what they want to with them. Sure.
I'm a school bus driver. I've been one, hi Jerry. I've been one for 23 years, but I just got to get a quick testimony before my daughter. I have a daughter, she's 41. She acquired AIDS when she was three. And we found out when she was 13, I'll be quick. And so we went to NIH because I want to do what's best for my daughter. I didn't do my research. I just wanted to keep my daughter alive because they told me she had lived five years. So we went to NIH and we got into trial studies, thought that, you know, because I wanted my daughter to live. She got the placebo or the medicine. She was 15 years old. A year later, that trial study came to light and she got the placebo. That means that she did not get the drug. Of course, her T cells were zero. That means she has no immune system. Isn't that strange? Nobody told her to wear a mask. We flew back and forth for years to NIH with no immune system and lots of diseases in between there. So, you know? But anyway, a year later from that, that's two years out. Her doctor looked at me and she, he said, thank goodness, I say praise God, she didn't get the medicine. She'd be dead today. That's an experimental drug. At age 20, she's got a new HIV medicine that had just come out. You know, okay, we're going to do this because she has no T cells. She was dying. She had, I mean, she wasn't dying, but she had been very sick that year. So she, we took that drug. In 2000, they gave her two hours to live. When she was in New Orleans and tree, oh, excuse me, forever. Anyway, two hours to live. Okay, because that H I D drug had already killed many people with HIV. Experimental drug. This vaccine is an experimental drug. So I've had experience with, with drug, but my daughter knows God and he is the awesome and he is the healer. So I just wanted to let y'all know, do your research. Masks, do your research. Because we're having to wear those on the bus. And let me tell you something, and I'm sorry, I can retire this year and in a few minutes if I need to. My children don't wear a mask on my bus and I don't wear one on my bus. And do you want me in a ditch or do you want me driving my bus? Because it, I mean, I, it panics me when I see my kids come up on my school bus with their masks on. And I don't tell them to wear them or not to wear them now. I'm not going to tell you to take your mask off. When my kids walk on my bus, let me tell you what I see. Remember the Jews walked in that shower? They thought they were going for salvation and for a clean shower years, way back many years ago? I see my kids walking in a mask on or whatever this government tells them to save their lives. And it's a lie from the pits of hell. Do your research. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be emotional, but my goodness, I've been through this. Have you been through AIDS? I was in the AIDS epidemic when they burned down the houses because your kids had AIDS. Keep it a secret, Kathy, nobody can know. You know, my daughter went, my daughter went, when she was 18 years old, told West Monroe that she had AIDS. We had 350 people that were vaccinated. But she's alive today, not because of anything I did, because I did everything wrong, but because of Almighty God and his healing. Thank you.
There you go. Patsy LaBeouf again. We was talking about having all these columns of monies, the columns, budget spent. And I was wondering who you need to talk to about adjusting the budget, maybe adding a few columns for a few things. Like for whenever there is protocol and y'all are calling us parents to come pick up our kids because we refuse to vaccinate them? What about for homeschooling? Because a lot of us can't afford to get a program. Because I'm not going to vaccinate my kids. I can't. I can't take the, uh, the very high risk of that vaccination attacking our blood system because it attacks everybody's blood system different to give them the antibodies. Everybody's bodies are just different. My body's already attacking itself. My children are showing signs of it too. It's hereditary. I can't, I can't let them get vaccinated. I have to pay attention. I'm very scared of all the new things. I do a lot of reading, a lot of research, just on the HIPAA, not the HIPAA, the, newest Papillomavirus for females and young children. Yes, thank you. I've done a lot of reading on that before I decided to get my daughter on that, before going to get all of the testing that I've done. I've done a lot of reading. They wanted to put me on testosterone therapy. Doctors were wrong about that. It could have really hurt me. We do need to do a lot of research on, and it should be individual. Every circumstance is different, every person, every case, just like autism. Sliding scale autism, it's such a big spectrum. Everybody is so different on each level. But we need to think about adding a column for whenever it does come around to the parents that won't be able to get their kids to school. What about those kids? Program for them? Because, you know, the VIP program I put my kids in last year because I was so afraid and terrified that if I got COVID, I could die because I already have a weak immune system. And it was atrocious. I mean, it accommodated them, but it was quite rough. It wasn't as good as it could have been and I don't like to complain. I'm not a confrontationalist. I'm a conversationalist. I'm not a problem causer. I'm a problem solver. But we need to make sure that there is some kind of net for them and possibly putting working functioning cameras on every bus, regardless if it has an assistant on it or not. Thank you.
Thank you for passing.
I also wanted to put into the record that regarding bus drivers and
I also wanted to put into the record that regarding bus drivers and masking of children that's still happening, per the presidential order, I'll send y'all an email after this meeting with the actual presidential proclamation. But in there, it actually does state that public school buses are excluded from masking on the buses. So it's not included in that. So to Mr. Manley, I wanted to read something from the Monroe City school board president that he posted publicly in regards to some things. He says, "I was glad to hear of our governor relaxing the mask mandate." He says, "I've received numerous calls from concerned parents, constituents, teachers, and principals on this matter. Because of these calls and my interest in this matter, please see my below findings and recommendations. I've had in-depth discussions with numerous pediatricians, epidemiologists, rhinologists, school-based surgeons, sinus and nasal specialists, ENTs, as well as the head of Rhinology and School-Based Research Group at Baton Rouge General Medical Center in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. I have also read published multiple peer-reviewed studies related to both SARS-CoV-2 and protection protocols involving masks, including rhinologic procedures in the era of COVID-19 healthcare provider protection protocol from the American Journal of Rhinology and Allergy, Volume 34, Number 4 of 2020. These are my primary findings from my exhaustive research. The vast majority of these medical doctors, medical professionals, and educators indicated that the mask mandates for children are erroneous, unwarranted, detrimental, and should be revoked. Please note that I do believe that mask mandates were originally implemented with noble reasons, given the significant concerns within the global community regarding the potential risks of infectious transmission of SARS-CoV-2. Scientific literature has evidenced that appropriate utilization of masks and respirators have been effective at preventing the spread of COVID-19, and in such cases, I fully support mask wearing. But it should be noted that the proper utilization of masks refers to appropriate selection, fit, and setting. Masks should be individually selected for the proper amount of filtration needed, ranging from no filtration to surgical masks, to N95 masks, to P100 respirators, to power air purifying respirators. They should also require individual fitting prior to usage, which involves individual measurement tests and adjustments performed by professionals. These masks should also be properly cleaned and disinfected on a frequent basis so as not to spread other viruses. Without these standards, the same effective protection cannot be assumed. Moreover, studies were conducted within hospital settings along with clinical and laboratory settings. And as such, their results should be also conferred to those same types of settings. The use of masks or respirators is actually not recommended for extended use or outside of clinical or laboratory settings. Not only is the school environment lacking the effective measures to recreate the success found in these personal protective equipment, but the risk of routine and prolonged mask wearing in children have not been adequately assessed. Present complications, however, are already apparent." He goes on to state some more things. I'm going to email this to you guys because I think this is important that a president of a school board made such a bold stand. And he closes with this, "Therefore, based on the science and the governor's recent easing of the mask mandate, I'm recommending that our Monroe City school system discontinues the forced practice on our children of mask wearing."
Thank you, ma'am.
Any more discussion from the board? Any more discussion from the board?
Yeah, we have a motion in a second. Peggy, do we have a motion in a second on this?
Manny, motion, I second.
They did. I thought they did.
Any more discussion from the board? On the favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Moving right on to item number eight. Consider ITEP Industrial Tax Exemption Program application, Ms. Regina Micas.
You have in your packet two ITEP applications. If you remember last month, we had two applications. These are two different applications. So not to be confused about a duplicated item. Both of these applications have been approved by the Louisiana Economic Development Board. One is from Delta Packaging. They are requesting a 10-year exemption of all total $85,536. That is in turn for a $675,000 investment. And the way this typically works is a business can apply for a tax exemption by documenting and applying with the Louisiana Economic Development Board. But they have put a significant economic stimulus into their manufacturing business in Washita Parish. So there's one from Del- Delta Packaging. The second is from Mid-South Extrusion. There is a $536,000 tax savings over 10 years with a $4.3 million investment in Washita Parish Manufacturing. So you have three options. You can approve, you can disapprove, or you can take no action on these. As I mentioned before, they've both been approved by the Louisiana Economic Development District Board.
These also go to the other municipalities within our area.
Right.
Please, Jerry.
They apply to one board. And then each individual board who collects taxes in the district are given a copy of that application and given the opportunity to approve or disapprove, if you so choose.
We have a motion in a second to approve or disapprove, or what?
Take no action, take no action is the other one.
Take no action?
I mean, we're taking no action.
Okay. Second. I got a second. Any discussion from the audience?
I think we're going to vote on it.
They're going to vote as no action.
That we're taking no action.
Okay, any discussion from the board? On the favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Okay, moving down to item number nine, financial report for September 30th, 2021, Ms. Micas.
You have in your packet the finance report from September 30th, 2021. This is the third month of the fiscal year. Actually, the second full month of operation in the fiscal year, a school generally starts up in August. Looking at our, at our current expenditures compared to fund balance we're running, right about what could be expected in general fund, we're at about 16% of our budget for operations, which would be true to our budget for the operating period. We're at 100% of the prior year fund balance in the general fund. And in District 1 MNO, we're up about 116%. What we've seen so far this fiscal year is our tax collections, our sales tax collections primarily being up about 16% over the collections from last year, which if you'll remember, they were up this time about 13%. So our tax collections, sales tax collections continue to increase as money is spent in the parish. If you look across the first page, we have the general fund, which I mentioned is right at 100% of prior year. We have the MNO, which is at 116% of prior year. That's our half-cent sales tax. We have the 1968 sales tax at 116% fund balance of the prior year. And the 1995 sales tax, it's at 135% of the prior year. This is our, the 1968 is our 13th check. The 1995 is our 14th check. And the West Washita sales tax is up about 135% fund balance over the prior year. West Washita sales tax projects we're currently funding is, we're looking at the end of the Bowley project. As we approach the end of construction, we have construction that's finishing up at Woodlawn and construction that is beginning at West Washita. On the second page, we have a detail of the Child Nutrition Fund. And then you'll note the grant funds that are, those are all of our grant funds together. And those are our cost reimbursement grants. So you'll notice that our revenues are not quite what our expenditures are for the year because we spend the money and then we request to get reimbursed. And if you look to the last two pages, this gives you the three-year comparison of the general fund and the MNO sales tax. Any questions?
We have a motion in a second to accept the financial report for September 30th, 2021. I move we accept the financial report as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion from the audience?
You say of the 72 million, just possibly offset your expenses in general fund? So did that freeze up money? I know you have another school you're trying to build. How will you approach that?
Where we can, we do use money through the ESRA grants for expenditures that would essentially go to the general fund going into this period of time when, you know, if you look back 18 months, when everybody was shut down, we really didn't know where our corporate tax collections were going to be at that time. We didn't know where our local revenue was going to be at that time. We didn't know where our state revenue was going to be at that time. So, yes, we are looking at spending funds through the ESRA grants that are allowable. You know, otherwise, the general fund would have to start this learning period and to reach them.
Right, but we, funds are set aside for that. So can new, the money in ESRA, can it be used for new construction? Or as Mr. Miller read, it could be used for air quality repairs?
Cannot be used for new, new construction. That's pretty much the, what we got back from the state. Clint, you want to?
There, there are some, there are some things that you can do with new construction, but it is very limited in scope. And there are, there is a plethora of approvals. Basically, there's always the governor's mansion that you have to get to even allow that as an allowable. You know, that's something you have to have pretty approved well in advance. And the way we looked at it was with the timeline given and our recent experiences with construction projects, you, you couldn't go into a, into a deconstruction project and guarantee that you could finish in the timeline that you could just reimburse all the funds, even if it will turn out to be one that isn't allowable. But we have stuff like that directly in there with, with the funds.
So these funds cannot be carried over?
Once.
Once '24 comes, they're gone?
That's it. That's what we've been told. Who knows? Okay, any more discussion? More discussion from the board? On the favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Moving down to item number 10, consider approval of the bid number 2022, Ms. Micas.
Forgive me, I'm stepping, I'm stepping in for Mr. Jones on this one, so I wanted to make sure I had the right item. As you know, Mr. Jones was able to run the New York City Marathon this past weekend and he is traveling home today. So I'm sure, as opposed to, to the airports and the way he's spending his day, he'd probably rather be here with us, but.
I saw he was able to complete the whole thing too, right?
He was, and he looked awesome doing it. We, you know, different people are sending him videos. So his spirits looked great and his energy level looked great. So very proud of him and, and Delain Geis for running that marathon this weekend. But anyway, so permission to bid, item number 2122, the Chiller for West Monroe High School Field House. So I believe you have behind your, in your packet that Mr. Jones left for us to be, to be all laid out under, on the last page, you have the bid tab for the HVAC equipment. And you see Mechanical Cooling Services is the low bid at $279,000. And they are responsive.
Yeah.
So we'd ask for that to be approved.
Okay. We have a motion in a second?
So, ma'am.
I'll second.
Any discussion from the audience? From the board? On the favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Micas. Moving down to item number 11. Change order for a new Bowley Elementary, Mr. Ken Slusher.
The board members, you all have in front of you a change order for the new Bowley Elementary School. It's to add ductwork and smoke dampers. We have talked with the contractor and the architect and just found this to be a legitimate change order and I ask for your approval. It's $94,791.97.
Okay. We have motion in a second to accept this change order for $94,791.97?
So, ma'am.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion from the audience? From the board?
Yeah, I have a question. Why was this change order necessary?
The, uh, these plans were submitted to the state fire marshal and approved. But the local fire marshal came back and, uh, they, they made a lot of changes. They took out a lot of the fire prevention. The fire marshal approved it, the doors, the frames, all that. And, uh, but the local fire marshal was the one that caught it. And it was just, it was left out of the plans. And now it has to be put in.
The engineer and the architect didn't catch that?
No, sir.
Question. Are we going to pay the architect and the engineer an additional fee that would reflect this $100,000?
Uh, I, I can't answer that.
My, my question is, if they were responsible for making sure that it should have been in the plan initially, it was left out. It was not our mistake, even though we got to pay for the additional change order. Why would we penalize ourselves if the architect and the engineer both were paid to do this the first time? It seems as if, you don't, you don't know for sure, but it seems as if, if they themselves were negligent. We should not pay for their negligence.
They made.
That's my observation.
Yeah, try to answer that question. They made a lot of changes in the plans to save the school board approximately $300,000.
Okay.
But when, on those plans, the engineer did not allow for the smoke dampers. So had he allowed it for it to start with, instead of saving $250,000, we would have saved $150,000. So we would have had to pay this either at the bid or pay it now, one of the two. And I think any architect, I don't care where you're from or who you are, they're never going to be able to draw a perfect set of plans. And the engineer screwed up on this one by not adding them back in when he took the other stuff out. And, uh, and say it's saving $250,000, we saved $150,000.
So what you're saying is, is if, if it, this had been drawled in the original plan, it's estimated to cost an additional $400, $350,000?
Yes.
So it's?
If the plan had stated, it was given initially, it would have cost $365,000. Due to the code changes that they followed, instead of costing $365,000, it's costing $100,000. They actually saved us about $250,000 by making these changes. So that is.
But in making those changes, he left out the air dampers and the.
That's, that's why the $100,000 is coming back now is because the draftsman did not put back in what was being required to replace what was being changed.
Any more discussion from the board? On the favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks.
Yes.
The next thing, I don't know, well, some of you wasn't on the board when this, this happened, but, uh, several years ago, the ROTC at Westminster came and made a presentation to the school board and asked for a practice pad where they could do their drills without getting on the, uh, the parking lot or getting on the driveways. And the board approved at that time, I think, twenty-five thousand dollars to fill that pad. And we were waiting until we moved the school-based health center trailer to put the pad there. And, uh, and that's what I'm asking you to do, uh, to re-approve this pad. Um, the estimated cost is somewhere between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars for the engineering and the laying of a two-inch pad for the practice drill.
We have a motion and a second to approve this practice pad.
Even though the board's already voted on it, Ken, is there a time lapse requirement or something on it or is reason we got to bring it back again?
Well, I, I brought it back again because it's been so long. And some of you, I don't think was even on the board when, I don't think, I know Debo wasn't, Mr. Harold wasn't. Uh, I don't know about Sherry, I don't know if they were or not. But since it's a whole new board and just to stay everything above board, I'd just like to ask for your approval again.
Again, we have a motion and a second from the board.
So move.
Somebody move, move.
You second?
Second.
Any discussion from the audience? From the board?
To tell a few couple of questions real quickly. Well, this is the pad of the J R T C.
I'm sorry?
This is the pad that the J R T C will utilize.
Right.
Yes.
It's a forty by fifty, two-inch thick asphalt pad. They ask for asphalt instead of concrete.
I know why.
Yeah.
Having been a J R T C'er.
But it, I mean, it, like I said, it's only two inches. It won't, you can't drive on it, can't, but you, it'll be good for walking and
My question.
Doing drills, whatever they do.
Is it, is it, is it, is it something that they really need, is it a good thing?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And it's right next door to the ROTC building, so it's real accessible for all.
Well, Dr. Coker, know where I'm going on this next question, next statement. Unless it's good at West Washita. Westminster.
West Monroe.
West Monroe, I mean, West Monroe. We ought to take a look at all the other high schools who have J R T C program.
Okay, I agree. Any more discussion?
Because I think that if it's good there and it's something that they are utilizing, and you know, I always think West Monroe gonna always be on the cutting edge.
Right.
Was my understanding that the Westminster sales tax is paying for this too, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, but we, we, we have, we have sales tax from East Washington, don't we?
We don't have a dedicated sales tax for construction.
Well, we save a lot of money with ESER money.
I'll let Clint, I'll let Clint address that.
We can, we can save some of that, use some of that money that we saved in general fund with the ESER money that we use. And that's outside, it will qualify.
The only thing I can say, uh.
I want to just make that notation and then we can discuss it later.
The only thing I can say is, Mr. McCoy, is the Westminster High School requested it. That's the only request I've gotten, or I think Dr. Coker's gotten for a practice pad.
And, and just, you make a good point, Reverend McCoy, but, uh, part of the, uh, entire dedication that we're doing at Richwood High School right now is a ROTC area for them to be able to march inside.
No, I wasn't talking about just Richwood.
Now he's meddling, ain't he?
Yeah, right. If you want to just distinguish one, I'm talking about.
I think space was the biggest reason for the request at that time, is what I think it was.
We got one for West Washita. Yeah.
Y'all do?
Yeah.
Good for you, Scotty. We're moving in that direction.
Any more discussion from the board?
I ain't rubbing it in.
On paper, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no, motion carries. Item number thirteen, construction renovation products report, Mrs. Ken Slusher.
I'm happy to finally announce that the Woodlawn project is complete. Uh, we have not made any payments to them. Uh, we hadn't got the paperwork on substantial completion yet. But, uh, we had our last meeting out there last week and everything looks good. Uh, still got some problems, some electrical problems in the home back area and, but they're working on trying to correct them. Uh, at West Washita, we had a pre-construction meeting. And, uh, they're just now getting all set up, ready to start working, so I don't have a report on them.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Dick. Let y'all have some questions.
I got a question.
Any discussion from the audience on construction renovations? Got one.
I'm sorry? We're enlarging the Ag Science Building and, uh, doing some, a lot of work in the admin area in the front.
Adding restrooms for the tennis courts, a locker room for tennis.
Yeah, as far as the Ag Building.
Okay.
No, man, we're not adding lots.
There's not lights, there's not lights in this.
Any discussion, discussion from the board?
You have another.
Um, so with the construction, I was wondering if, um, have y'all considered actually expanding the parking lot after council?
Pre the parking lot, what? We, uh, the board last board meeting hired an architect to find press.
We're putting a, getting a awning put on the front. And then parking lot. You have an issue of space and drainage, but that is something we've definitely been looking at. We actually have. We have, we have been looking at several things at times.
Any more discussion? Update on Washita roof, Washita High School roof completion?
Nope.
Yeah.
No, uh, not daily. Once a week maybe, but not daily.
It'll, it'll be complete by Christmas.
Christmas?
Yeah.
Okay.
We can write that down, Ken?
No.
Last time he told me two weeks and I'm, I'm putting it on myself and it's going to be ready by Christmas.
I'll put it down by Christmas.
He didn't say what year.
No, thank you, Tommy, I did.
Okay, Ken, you're going to do the evaluation of bids?
On what? Thirteen? Yes, you're going to? No, no, thirteen.
So they were all on Bobby's list and I do need to correct item number ten.
Yeah, I did, I did.
I do need to correct item number ten under business. Uh, I went to the wrong note. I should have studied my notes a little more that were handed to me. Um, item number ten for consideration of approval of bid number twenty-one, twenty-two.
Uh huh.
That is actually, um, for Westminster High School Field House, three compressors in the chiller at Westminster High School Field House have gone out. And instead of repairing the twenty-year-old chiller at a cost of twenty-eight thousand dollars, we're going to replace it for fifty thousand. Due to the circumstances of when the bid opening falls, we're requesting permission to approve this bid when it's opened on November the thirtieth. And the results of the bid will be presented at the December meeting.
Okay.
So that is number ten to request preapproval of the lowest responsive bidder for the Westminster High School Field House.
I would think we need another motion and second on this.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Uh, item number ten, consider approval of the twenty-twenty-two, uh, for fifty thousand dollars. Uh, do we have a motion and a second?
So move.
Yeah, okay, second.
Okay, any discussion from the audience? From the board?
What was the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand?
I'll get to that one.
Okay.
I picked up a, a similar item.
On paper, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, no, motion carries.
So under evaluation of bids, back, back to the correct place on the agenda.
Uh huh.
Uh, there are two items, the HVAC equipment, uh, which is the two hundred and forty-nine thousand that was bid, um, and that is the, uh, bid evaluation in your packet. And that lowest bidder is responsive.
Okay.
The second item in your packet is the copy paper.
Okay.
Those bids are attached, that was pre-approved at the previous meeting due to the, the bid being open uh, between meetings, Mr. Jones had requested a preapproval of the lowest responsive bidder and this is a report back to you on the lowest responsive.
Do we have a motion and a second to, uh, accept these bids? Item number twenty, I mean, item number nine, twenty-two, and then bid number nineteen, twenty-two?
I saw a move that we accepted bids.
Second.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion from the audience? From the board?
What's HIV, what, what, I mean, what is this going to replace now?
Lake Shore? Any more discussion from the board?
And those are through ESER funding as it's written in the budget.
Okay. Any more questions? On paper, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Moving down to permission to bid, you going to take all these at once?
Yes, sir.
One, two, and three?
Items one, two, and three, um, twenty-one, twenty-two, the chiller at Westminster Field House, we, which we discussed previously with the request for preapproval. The Ag Science equipment at Westminster High School, um, these are just various items needed for the Ag Science uh, by request of the teachers in those programs at each school. And twenty-three, twenty-two, musical instruments, uh, these are just the normal instrument purchases for the bands.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, have bid these three numbers, one, two, and three?
I move, grant permission to bid on all three items.
I'll second.
Okay, we got it. Any discussion from the audience? From the board? On paper, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries. Board, our next meeting will be a public hearing December the seventh at five o'clock.
Five o'clock?
Yep, Dr. Coker?
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. Uh, I, I am happy to say that our, uh, fourteenth check will be going out to our employees on Friday of this week. And we've posted and let them know what their check's going to be, so.
May all the teachers happy.
And, and all of our employees should be happy because it is up considerably from what it was the past, uh, year. Ms. Hicks?
Mr. Hicks, uh, why aren't we meeting at five o'clock?
This is a special call meeting for the redistricting plan, is what it is. Yeah, for December seventh, and then that will come back to the board on December fourteenth at the regular board meeting.
Does the audience have any questions about the superintendent's or the president's report? Yes, ma'am.
She had her hand up.
The reason we ask y'all to come to the mic is because it is YouTube'd, and so if you're sitting in the audience, they can't hear you.
Okay, I understand. Um, I wanted to readdress the fact that I had, um, spent seventeen long minutes with Miss Peggy trying to get a hold to Mr. Coker, which I see who you are now. Um, with no, you have, there's a email, I actually had to talk to her the next day to get an email to, to act. Tried to explain to her I tried to resolve the situation with whom I needed to speak with. Um, why was it so difficult to get a hold to you?
Give me, if, if I, I knew nothing about the message, to be honest with you, and, and I was out. And, uh, so it may be that, you know, I, I schedule my appointments pretty much. And if people email me, then I schedule times to either see them. Uh, if I get phone calls, yesterday I was out all day long, you know, one place or the other, but we'll be glad to visit and talk with you.
Yeah, um, I appreciate that. It was last week whenever I tried to set up the appointment, um, and I would actually like for my children to be present because they're the ones.
We'll, we'll meet after this and set a time for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any more discussion? Do I have a meeting? Met to adjourn?
Oh, move.